We have a public meeting statement. On Wednesday, January 12, 2022, notice of this meeting was emailed to the press and The Current of Ag Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Ag Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Roll call? Mrs. Bonjorino? Mike, somebody's Mike.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd is absent today, death and her family. Ms. Hyman?
Here.
Mr. Ireland? Is he still with us?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ireland is available via Google Meet. And Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Seppi?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
Okay, the flag, please.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the minutes.
Motion.
Second. Motion, Mr. Seppi, second, Mrs. Sullivan. And we will do roll call, Mrs. Bonjorino?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
And Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Brucio, you ready?
I'm ready. I have to use the mic, right? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May Board Meeting. I cannot believe it's May already. Can't quite tell from today's weather, but we are at the end of May now. It's been a great year so far, and we, of course, have exciting things to share with our public. And if everything's working right, we'll get going here. Okay, ready? Here we go. All right, so under our district learning goals, each month I highlight the great things that's going, that are going on in our schools. And this past month, under student achievement, our students at Miller, traditionally every year, run that Miller Mile, and it's very exciting with music and exercise that the students received that day. They always look forward to it. Our Ag Harbor Township High School choir had, had shows this past weekend, our symphony, our art department, our district quarrel festival was held, all great things in terms of fine performing arts. Alder Avenue had their steam tank finals, and Miller School took part in the robot circuit steam project. So again, meeting our district learning goals in many, many different ways. And I have no idea what that is, but... That's the concert call? That's the concert? Hang on a second. Let me just fix it while I have time. All right, here we go. All right, so under student achievement, also, our students participating in activities, but they're very, very much involved and they're engaged, and I want to make a point. They wouldn't be able to do it unless they were successful in the classroom. So the time and effort that they put in the classrooms allows them to spend the extra time after school practicing and at night performing. The Miller School gifted and talented Word Master Challenge was held, and our Miller School students did quite well nationally in this contest, and it's very important that we highlight them. They're very excited, and their teacher, Ms. Kelly Hunt, was first and ready to share with us at Central Office of the great things that they were doing. Under climate and culture, we celebrated many, many things this month, from Teacher of, of the Year, Teacher Appreciation Week, Nurses Day, Special Education Week. We always have our Students of the Week and Month, and there's some Eagles students up there on the right. Alder Avenue had a dance. The kids were so excited. If you follow them on Twitter, there's lots of pictures there, the things that they, they had that night. Miller Mentor Program that's going on, and African-American history class visited, African-American Museum in Washington, D.C. And Mr. Bell is here this evening with us for, for basketball, but he also takes the time to educate his students and give them cultural experiences. So thank you, Mr. Bell. Community partnerships, our Ed Foundation held its golf tournament. Our community partnership had the Dyson Dine, which was a great time the other night. Atlantic County held its eighth grade dialogue through the Atlantic County School Boards Association, and William Seaman represented Farnwood. Ag Harbor Township Police Department met with our administration last week to discuss new rules and regs that's going on, so that we'll be able to create, revise our handbooks that were spot on with the laws and the new regs. Mr. Peter Murphy from Stockton University met with our ELL students at the high school and assisted them with writing and filling out college applications. And our junior ROTC is an announcement that I'm going to make this evening, and I'll talk a little bit about that later, but junior ROTC is a partnership that we just made. Just want to talk a little bit about partnerships and community involvement. Last week, we held our first strategic planning meeting. It was held at the high school. Our next strategic planning meeting will be June 14, and I encourage you all to join us. It's at Farnwood at 7:00 P.M. Strategic planning was based on feedback from the stakeholders in the community, and we sent out a survey to students, to teachers, to parents. We had stakeholders come and collaborate and talk about the needs of the district and form a consensus in terms of what is needed for our school district. Here are items that I listed over the last five years or so, and definitely part of our previous strategic plan, that has been accomplished here in the school district. And that is the towns and aspire programs because the public requested before and after school care. Delayed openings, as you know, Ag Harbor Township hadn't had a delayed opening in many, many years. We would have to, a dusting of snow, and we would have to close the school district. But that was put in place. Social emotional learning resources, full day kindergarten, that was a big one. Full day kindergarten, full day pre-K, the preschool expansion, the grant that we received to be able to expand even more next year. We did facility improvements through HVAC projects, a new turf, a new track, and five new fields that, that you see next to the high school. Also, outdoor classrooms in our middle schools. High school concentrations in academies, the Swifts label complex merged, one-on-one technology for our students, middle school elective. We branded ourselves. We went from almost nearly 50 different Eagles to one that we're very, very proud of. We have a security department now, class three officers, armed guards, unarmed guards. We have a focus on equity and a focus on MTSS and RTI, all birthed from the strategic plan, all accomplished by this administration fulfilling the needs of the community. So we are proud of that, but we want to share that this has been accomplished. We're meeting with stakeholders for new ideas and new initiatives that we can put in place and present to the board in July, so that we can start on that work for the next school year, and the public will decide at the next meeting whether we will have a three-year plan or a five-year plan. Okay, so again, I invite you to become, to become a part of this process because it's very important to me, because as we embrace our community, I want to know what your needs are, what your wants are, so we can engage in some action and make it happen. Okay, that's why I'm here, that's what I want to do. Speaking about making things happen, this has been in the making for all the years that I've been here, all right, over 20 years ROTC program in the high school. And it's very, we would get, oh, well, this district has Army, and this district has Navy, this district has Air Force, and sorry for your district, but we don't, we don't have anything that you can become involved in. And, and we've tried. Anybody remember Mr. Danny Lawless, all right? Terry Charlton, when he was Director Guidance? I was principal of the high school at the time. You know, keep asking, keep researching. Sam Elko got involved. The last couple of years, Mr. Santilli came on board, Dr. Carmelita Graham, and Sam, you know, is there a possibility? Is there a possibility? And then one day, we get a phone call, and we hear, you know what? We'd like to come see your high school, we'd like to take a tour, we'd like to talk to you and see if ROTC program, Air Force Division, would be a fit for Ag Harbor Township. You do the tour, you sit there, you answer the questions, they review, they go back, and you get a phone call, what, two weeks ago, a week and a half ago? We want to be in EHT. So, exciting, very, very exciting, but now what happens, right? What do we have to do? We have to go and we have to have a meeting with Air Force, we have to look at the personnel that's needed, we have to look at space and the space we do have in the high school, so we're ready to go. What's so exciting is this aligns with our aviation focus. So if you know me, and been around for the last four, five years, you know my passion for aviation, how we're, we're bringing that to our students through our stream education and also our aviation camps in the summer. So it aligns with aviation, there's connections with FAA, makes sense. Ag Harbor Township are right here, Atlantic City International Airport, in the 177th Fighter Wing National Guard. So it just, the, the planets have aligned. This program will allow our students to achieve private pilot certificate scholarships. We'll have partners with Emory Riddle, Purdue University, Liberty University. It prepares our students for their real-world applications. It promotes citizenship, life skills, self-discipline, respect, and focus. And of course, it wraps around our student learning goal of street. So what the Air Force is about, it's about creating leaders in our school. It's not about recruiting folks for the Air Force, okay? That's not what it's about. It's about creating leaders, all right, who are interested in learning, exploring, and selling, accelerating the areas of aerospace sciences, to be excellent leaders, whether they become educators, or they become administrators, or they become leaders in their family. It advances, there's possibility to advance in a military career if that's where they want to go. Exposure to military bases and aerospace facilities, earn college scholarships, and have real-life experiences, all right? Just real quick, here's the focus of study for aerospace science and leadership. It'll be a four-year program for a student that enters as a freshman, where they'll be able to be educated in aviation history, the science of flight and communication and awareness, exploration of space, and life skills and career opportunities, and the management of the cadet corps and principles of management. We are looking to put this course where, in, in the high school, in the D Wing, there's a current program in there called the Bridge Program right now. It's a perfect spot with classrooms. There's also space outside for where the cadets will do their marching. The Air Force will provide to educators and uniforms for our students. We have to provide the spaces for that. So, very exciting. Our students are going to have more opportunities, and that's what we're about, providing our students opportunities, relevant opportunities, so that they can figure out what they want to do in life. When, when does it begin? It begins this September, the fall of 20, I'm sorry, that should be 2022, where the U.S. Air Force will move into the high school. Application process will start, all students are accepted. There is a physical fitness test, but there are waivers in place. Guidance and the program of study will outline what's going to be needed and, you know, how the students can, can enlist and enroll. We will do a blast through our website and social media to let the community know. We need to have 100 students involved in this program, all right, or 10% of our school population by the end of the third year. So we have three years to grow it, and again, this isn't about recruitment, this is about involvement, this is about participation and an opportunity for our students to learn and grow. And it takes flight in January 2023, okay? All right, so the community connections here, what we envision, our ROTC, our junior ROTC program to be involved in is our students in uniform who would attend those community events, the National Night Out, the HT Memorial Day Parade, to be involved in sporting events and school ceremonies, raising flags, graduation, National Honor Society, be able to be involved in the Military Appreciation Month, to collaborate with our U.S. History II classes for their annual Veterans Program, coordinate with our child development students to visit and teach elementary students to be those role models, and our students would be present in our community. 1,500 hours of service is required, and I just think it's a great program and a great plus to our already wonderful, comprehensive high school. So thank you to all who have been involved. I appreciate your passion, but particularly your persistence in being, being able to bring this to Ag Harbor Township, okay? All right, so with that, we have some recognitions, and at this time, I'll bring up our athletic director, Mr. Kevin Rutledge. Why don't you bring up a high school principal since you, come on, on up. And you have the assistant athletic director here, Ms. Nicole Perone. Come on, Ms. Connor, does anyone, like, what, one more month left? Come on. Come on up, come on up, all right? So what we're going to do at this time, we're going to honor our Ag Harbor Township swim teams. We have our women's team and our men's team, so Coach Wendy, come on up, Mark Jamison. And I'll brag a little, but you get to brag even more, okay? So, you know, again, years and years ago, I stand in this room, and, you know, there was, oh, tell me about Ag Harbor Township Athletics, how do we make them better? Now, they're better, they're the best, all right? We've got good stuff going on. We have championships each and every season, and, and this swim team has been amazing, not only the men's team, but the women's team. Cape Atlantic League champions, undefeated in, in their division. So they're, they're very, very important tonight that, that we honor them. I'm going to hand the mic over to Mr. Rutledge.
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to say how proud I am of this group, both on, you know, both in, in the pool and out, you know, looking at team GPAs, they're constantly at the top of ours, of our entire school system. So I appreciate not only the effort you put in and practice, which is countless hours, both with us and club teams, you know, dry land as well, and so congratulations, Coach Jamison.
So before I give homage to the swimmers who actually did all the work, just to kind of echo the sentiments of Dr. Brucio, it's impressive what they do in the pool, more impressive out of it. This is our first high school senior class, and I've been a coach for our boys and girls, and all of my seniors are already accepted and attending a four-year school for next year. And we have three Ivy League schools. We have Penn, Princeton, and Brown. So it's pretty unique as a coach to kind of have that in one graduating class. You know, very proud to be the academic GPA champions also this year. We had 21 first-team All-Cape Atlantic League athletes between the boys and girls team. The picture here, all of them placed in the top 10 in the state of major champions. We broke six individual and relay records between the boys and the girls, and the boys were ranked in the NJ.com top 10, and the girls were ranked in the top 15. So that is the 10th year consecutive that we've been in the top 20, so that's very impressive months there. And again, the, the accolades only pay a little bit of the work that puts in. Parents, the kids, they do a great job, day in and day out, of just waking up early, getting in that pool, and going, the work of the school, the, the board, you know, it goes so far, you know, because the pool is a hard thing to maintain, but it's the opportunity it provides for them, both growing as athletes, it also provides a venue for them to excel athletically and academically. So if you guys could just stand up real quick, we have... Getting ahead of you. So... I'll just call all the people up that we have here. So we have Leo Smolewski, Michael Wojo, Max Smolewski, Alex Smolewski, Elko, Carl Schreiner, Dylan DeWitt. So, again, very fortunate to work with such wonderful athletes, parents' success, and the support of our athletic department, our administration, our board, once again, make this all possible. And again, it's just proud to be in the things we accomplish. It's a great program to be a part of, and these kids have made us more than proud.
So again, like Coach said, you know, the work out of the pool and in the pool, we appreciate all that you do for us. You represent Ag Harbor Township, and I'm very, very proud of, of you and your achievements, and just, just keep at it, because, you know, you're shining stars, and we appreciate when you put on the Ag Harbor Township uniform, bathing suit, you know, you represent the Eagles, and you represent all of us here, and we couldn't be prouder of you. Just continue, stay on that path, you're doing well. And again, this is about student achievement, and we talked about it at the, the strategic plan, it's not about filling in that bubble, all right? It's about all the other things that go along about being a, a student. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not only the classroom, the classroom doing well gets you to participate outside the classroom. And this is the extra time that they, these students put in to, to achieve, and kudos to the parents for driving them to the swim meets, picking them up late at night, and supporting them, making sure they get their homework done. Okay, we're going to move on to highlighting another team. Our boys' basketball team this year did very well with a record of 15-0, but there was one person who was very, very special and outstanding in, in that achievement of being 15-0. And that young man is here tonight, his name is Mr. Carlos Lopez, and if you could come on. Coach Bell, come on up.
Coach Bell was one of the first individuals to reach out to me when I came out here, you know, my first year being at EHT, and we sat down, we talked, and one of the first names out of his mouth was Carlos Lopez. And every word that you described about Carlos then was true every single day that I met him. He's one of the most athletic young men I've ever seen, but he's a better person. And, you know, when you meet him, you talk to him, a smile can light up a room, but his basketball acumen will light up a scoreboard. So it's a pleasure being a part of this, and I appreciate everything you all have done and in the history you all have set this year.
Yeah, I, I mean, I could talk forever about Carlos Lopez. Just a little quick, little clarification, we were 23-4 this year as a team, best record in school history, and that doesn't happen without this young man to my left right here, Mr. Carlos Lopez. As you see on the screen, 1,566 points, and his third all-time for Ag Harbor Township, most three-pointers ever. I mean, this, this is a kid who, from the day he stepped foot on campus, he's just worked. Like, and it's, it's a wonderful thing as a coach when you have someone that works hard and is just a good kid. Like, just, just a good kid that, you know, you would love to, your, your children, who I have two, to idolize and grow up and be like, and that's Carlos Lopez. So another round of applause for him. And I, I honestly, I truly, every time I told you, I would be remiss if I did not, we talk about this community and what it takes to, you know, to get here and the support. Like, I've had support from almost every person in this room. You know, sometimes, you know, keep, help keep me out of trouble because I can be a bit much, and everyone, everyone in here has helped me out, and I truly appreciate all you. I love you, H C, that's me.
We wanted to honor some of the trophies. We couldn't do all of them because we have other things to do tonight. I'm sure there's another room set aside in your household for everything that Carlos has won this year in the past, but we want to make sure, first, Carlos was first-team Cape Atlantic and All-South Jersey. Carlos also won the press, the AC Press Player of the Year. And this past month, the athletic directors in Cape Atlantic all unanimously voted for Carlos to be male, the Winter Male Athlete of the Year.
If you know anything about basketball, there's only five players on the court, so it's, it's a slim pick. And so Carlos, to be able to achieve all these great accolades is absolutely amazing, and we're going to miss you, we're very, very proud of you, and we thank you for putting that uniform on each and every night and going out there and playing for Ag Harbor Township, so we appreciate you. Thank you very much. Very, very proud. Very proud of you and wish you luck in your future endeavors. Okay, real quick, we'll just go over our visual.
Seems to me that people keep seeing more and more, they gotta say, lead the way. It's okay. They gotta say, it's okay. All right. They gotta say, lead the way. Let go. Oh. 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 Thank you again to our TV studio for capturing all the great things that happened throughout the month, and it just gives the public an idea of the great things that go on in our school district. So Dr. Brucio is having technical problems tonight, okay? There we go. All right, so that is my superintendent's report is regarding what's going on in our student learning goals and the new present, new programs that I presented to you. But now, we're going to have Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Lily Moss, present to you some data on our school performance report. Here it is for you.
Yes, this is required by the New Jersey Department of Education. We stood in front of you in the fall of this year with the previous year's data, and not a lot has changed, because we have not actually had any state testing. We are underway with state testing right now, as Ms. Elko can attest to back there. Lots of it. So hopefully next year, we'll have a better snapshot of where our students are and how the work that we've been doing over the past three years is measuring up to our state standards. So for right now, this is the student, it's the school performance reports, so we have a district report and school reports. They will be on our webpage, there will be a link for you so that you can go in and see the district information as well as each individual school. It is on our homepage under District Headlines, there's a link there, and you'll see that that will take you to the link of the DOE and a letter from Dr. Brucio explaining what the performance reports tell us. So the state gives us this understanding that there is a great impact from COVID-19 still, since we haven't been able to have state testing until this year. So these performance reports are giving us data on lots of things. It talks about our absenteeism, it talks about discipline, it talks about, but our classic data of our ELA scores, our math scores, our student growth percentiles, that data is still old data and not in this report, and you'll see the old data from 2018 in here. So what kind of information do you typically see? You see an overview, you see our demographics, so all of those, all that information has been updated. You'll see school climate and environment, you'll see academic achievement, and you'll notice that next to student growth and academic achievement and school accountability, the asterisk, and again, that's that missing data. So here's our enrollment since 2018. You'll see that our enrollment has gone down a little bit, but has remained pretty steady, if you notice that line. This is as of October 15, so this is the snapshot that we do every year for the state on October 15, so that is that enrollment as of that date, and so that was in the fall of 2020. All right, so student growth. So typically speaking, in grades four to eight, and in grades four to seven for math, we have what we call an SGP, where students are compared in their growth year to year. We have not had assessments in 2019 or 2020, so those indicators are not here. We are testing this year, but if you're looking... We are testing this year, but if you're looking comparatively across two years, this again will not be there next year as well, since you'll have to have two years of data captured consecutively to get to that student growth percentile. So you'll see that our last snapshot was in 2018-19 school year. Also in that school year, just to note, the state test changed. So that data comparatively to the year before was also not exactly the same. So we are looking forward to getting some new data in and looking at how the state will be reporting out that achievement to us for next school year. So this again talks about that we have many different levels of proficiency. We have our student learning assessment. We also have our DLM, which is the Dynamic Learning Maps, which we will also report out on through special education. And then we have access for our ELL population. So here is statewide assessment proficiency. So you'll see that we have a very high participation rate in our district. That was the proficiency rate in 2018. We do local assessments in the meantime. We have not stopped assessing our students or trying to know where they are according to our state standards and helping to set them on a growth. Our teachers every year do set SGOs, our Student Growth Objectives. We have a universal screening process that we use where we use standard benchmark assessments. We use adaptive assessments to try to narrow down gaps of learning, and we do those three times a year. We also have our PLCs. We do intervention data collection, so really trying to monitor our students compared to where they are expected to be with the state standards and where they're performing to help fill in those gaps and get all our students to proficiency. There are many different pathways for graduation, especially over the past few years. You know, when PARC came out, we had not just the state test anymore, that 11th grade test, but there were what the state referred to as graduation pathways. So different ways that students can show proficiency in ELA and math so that they are able to meet that graduation requirement. Graduation rate, there's a new graduation rate for federal reporting that is taking out the students with disabilities in the numerator. So you might see now that there will be two different graduation rates. There will be a state graduation rate, and there will be a federal one, and that's starting in 2022. So here's our graduation rate over the past three years, so in 2019, 20, and 21. You'll see that there's a four-year graduation rate and then a five-year graduation rate. And that is for our special education students who continue on in our program. Our numbers are very high. As Dr. Gruccio pointed out, as strategic planning, we are the number-one graduation rate in Atlanta County. Here is the report out of the federal graduation rates. Our numbers are pretty similar, and you'll start to see this a little bit more as we get more of these performance rates, having the two different rates now. Here are those pathways that we talked about. So you can take the statewide assessment. You also have a process called a portfolio appeal, where seniors who have not met the requirement through another way, through an SAT, through ACT, ASVAB. There's lots of different ways that they can achieve proficiency and show it. We do have a process senior year where students can go through what we call the portfolio process, where students work to show proficiency in different areas. They work with teachers, and then we submit that to the state for approval. That was waived last year and the year before. That was up and running and back in full force this year. So we'll have numbers to report out on that with our next school performance report. College and career readiness. So this is our percentage of how the state looks at our 12th graders that took the SAT in high school. And remember that this is last year's data. So this is still coming out of the pandemic. We are still in line with the state, and our dual enrollment coursework is double the state average. So I think that really says a lot. It's a lot of work for our high school team, but it really gives our students great opportunity. And we are continuing to add to our CTE. You heard a lot about some different opportunities tonight, so we're excited to see what these numbers show as we continue to move through. Student safety. So here are the number incidents that happened in last school year. And, you know, that always gets through the SSDS, and Mr. Santilli presents to us on those scores also. Early childhood. So one of our biggest achievements over the past few years is doing full-day kindergarten and full-day preschool. So you'll see that our numbers are now zero in that half-day as of last school year as we opened up our full-day pre-K and full-day kindergarten. Student to supports and services, our student-to-teacher ratio, student-to-administrators. You'll notice here that we have some higher ratios and some lower ratios, but our student-to-teacher ratio being 12 to 1. Here's post-secondary enrollment. You'll see that our numbers are pretty in line with the state and that our numbers within our own demographics are all really close to one another, which I think is a bonus in the fact of our total population numbers and all of our subgroups listed. And that's it. So all of this information and more can be found on the website, and hopefully we'll have more information next year to report out from our school performance report.
Okay, some of you may be saying, yeah, some of that's good data. Thank you, Lily. And some of it, there's a bunch of blanks. And when I saw the blanks, I'm like, we're presenting blanks. But we're presenting blanks? Why? Because we have to, okay? But hopefully Lily explained it, that that's where we are, the pandemic, you know, put a little kink in things, but hopefully we're back on the right road and we'll be able to share more data with you. But all school districts are required to present out tonight or this month on this information. Okay, one more thing we have to do because we have to do it. And Mr. Santilli is going to present to you the HIB final grade report.
Thank you very much. So under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, one of our requirements, and oftentimes you'll hear me talk about a mid-year review, end-of-year review, this is actually very similar to the performance report information. This is previous year's data. So this is our final grade report for the 2020-2021 school year. We're just going to go through what that means. So part of the Commissioners Program, you can see it's identified here. This is last year's data. And ultimately, what this means is that our anti-bullying specialists through the school climate teams completed self-assessment. That self-assessment is going to be made up of eight components. Those components or elements are listed right here. Everything from trainings to programs are identified within the school, how many meetings the school climate team has, the work that's being done behind the scenes to be able to remediate for both offenders and victims. So there's a lot of information that goes into this. And ultimately, that self-assessment is then compiled for every single school, which then ultimately gives us our district grade. You take a look at the end of the year, what ends up happening is that you can get a total of 78 total points for every single school, and then that is then compiled and submitted. It goes through the Anti-Bullying Coordinator, which I serve as, as well as each of the building principals, gets inputted into SSDS, and then finally is approved by the district. You can see a history here, just to give a little benchmark in terms of the progression over the years. We remain pretty consistent in our total overall points. And this year, we have a total of 75 out of 78 points, which was also predicted at the end of last year for 2021, when we did our final HIB report as a district. And it looks a little different. They've changed the format, as I mentioned. The process is a little bit different this year. But ultimately, SSDS now through Home Room presents the information for each of our schools in this way, which is nice because it breaks it down in a table format, so you can see each of those core elements and how it's broken down. And you can see each of the different schools and how it then gives us our overall district grade at the top of 75. That concludes our report.
Okay, and that concludes my report, but not without saying, there's exactly one month left of school. And with that said, we have some young students here who have homework to do. And if you don't mind, President Solagi, I have classes dismissed. Thank you for coming. Enjoy your evening, and we'll turn the board meeting over to the Board of Education.
Okay. Congratulations to our student athletes. Thanks for coming. We have a student rep. Do you have something for us?
Yeah. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm doing Lauren and I's portion for tonight. She's feeling unwell. So first, the EHT girls softball won the Cape Atlantic League Championship, and we'll be moving on. And also, the EHT boys crew team, Novice Eight Boat, got silver at the Philadelphia City Championships, and both the girls and boys crew teams have boats competing this weekend in Nationals. And then Egg Harbor Township Boys won the Cape Atlantic County Track Championship. Also, at Egg Harbor Township High School is Week Four of EHT Idol. And last Saturday, four of our Fernwood Band students performed with the All South Jersey Elementary Honors Band at Abseghamie High School. And at Miller, students got to participate in Project Adventure in participation with the high school.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to open to the public for comments on agenda items only. Does anybody want to speak? Come to the podium and state your name and address.
How are you doing? My name is Richard King.
If you can please use the microphone right in front of you, just tap towards the base. There's a, yeah. Name and address, please.
There we go.
Thank you.
My name is Richard King. I live 110 Winnipeg Avenue. I understand you guys are going to be voting on the ROTC program tonight. Is that correct? Okay. I want to say one thing is, Dr. Gruccio, thank you for the due diligence on getting this program started. I wish you guys were able to get this sooner. I am a ROTC candidate when I was in high school or in middle school also. I'm originally from Las Vegas, so I transplanted here. I am also a veteran. I think this program will help this community greatly, especially with some of these students. We've had many students in our township go into the military. I know the ROTC is not a recruitment. It never was, it never has been. But we've had many students go through into the military and have great, successful careers. The ROTC program on my behalf became a great stepping stone. It taught me my discipline, what I needed and what I was looking forward to when I wanted to go in the military. I went in the Navy, but coming from a military family, my father was retired Air Force. And my daughter, which was the student rep for the township, I'm very proud of her. But when it comes to this vote, I really hope you guys vote yes, because it will help many students in this township that need that discipline, that are looking for that and looking for something to better themselves in the future. And it is, it's just a great stepping stone for anybody that wants to do it, you know? And I encourage you guys to really consider and vote yes for this. So, thank you.
Thank you for your service. Anybody else?
Mrs. Solagi, we do have the phone number up on the website, so we'll keep that up for around 30 seconds and see if anybody calls. Thanks.
Okay. All righty.
There are no callers.
So we'll move on to Finance and Operations. And Mrs. Sullivan, you have a report.
Good evening. Our committee met on May 10th. In attendance were Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, Mrs. Solagi, Ms. Anaya, Dr. Gruccio, special guest, Mr. Beck, and myself. We started out our meeting discussing transportation and how we are still in dire need of bus drivers. We are short bus drivers now, and we're actively still working on routes for the 22-23 year, routes for the 22-23 school year. Facilities, we still also need some people in facilities. Our new director will be starting July 1st. Project status, we're in the process of doing LED testing, LED lighting, the soccer fields that they're working on. Of course, our HVAC throughout the district and roof replacement at the high school. Mr. Beck was our guest, and he wanted to thank the board and the public for all the support that the staff of the food service has received, all the encouragement, our financial support. He just wanted to make sure that the whole board knew how much he appreciated everyone. He is also in need of staff, substitute staffing, and it's going to be a challenge because that's throughout the state. There have been hiring depletions. So if anybody knows of anybody for food service and bus, we'd appreciate you turning that in. Facilities had, we discussed in the past how facilities evaluated all of the equipment and has put it on a calendar as far as replacement and the length of use for different things. Food Service is also doing that. They're going to take an audit of all their kitchen equipment and see what the life expectancy is so that they can put their expenses on a calendar chart to see when the monies are going to be needed for certain kitchen equipment. Let's see. We did receive approval from the state that we can have a waiver for paper goods right now, styrofoam right now and paper goods. It's going to go over, we don't exactly know how we're going to prepare all the meals with the plastics and other things being banned. So Mr. Beck is coming up with some really unique ideas on how we're going to be serving our clients. And that is the conclusion. Ms. Anaya, do you have anything else to report?
No, that was a great report. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. I do want to add, it wasn't an official committee. I'll call it the ad hoc Business 101 Committee we had after our meeting on Tuesday evening. In attendance, we had Mrs. Bonjourno, we had Ms. Hyman, Mrs. Tanika Gilbert Floyd, and Mr. Seppi. And we went over our finance and operations items that are continue to be voted on monthly. They're monthly reports, if you will, and just how they were developed, how we got to the point of getting them onto the agenda, and what the acronyms mean and why they're actually voting as board members. So I think that meeting went over very well. If there's anything else the board would like to know about our worlds, we can also just continue to educate. Thank you.
Okay. We need a motion for transfers, 8.2.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Sullivan, second by Mrs. Bonjourno.
Oh, sorry. Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Discussion?
Discussion. And discussion on transfers?
No? Okay.
Mrs. Bonjourno? For transfers? Up, mic, live mic.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Solagi?
Yes. Okay, now we need a motion for 8.3 to...
8.25.
Motion?
That's Mrs. Sullivan, second by Mr. Ireland.
Right.
A discussion? Okay, Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Curriculum Committee report. Mr. Price?
Okay, thank you. The curriculum report is as follows. We met on May 10th at 5:30 PM here at the Alder Avenue School. Ms. Bonjour, Mr. Delabarka, and Dr. Gruccio, and myself. Administrator attending was Lily Moss. I didn't discuss... I didn't discuss agenda items discussed for professional development, field trips, and Imagine Learning, which will provide our students and teachers with SEL curriculum and our summer learning opportunities. Informational topics shared and discussed were around curriculum development, summer programs, and proposed SEL curriculum. Updates from the previous curriculum committee were also discussed, sharing sample lessons, curricular materials, and the library list of books from K to 8. Conclusions reached. The committee would like to keep informed and review more in depth the process for text and supplemental book selections. And these lists will be shared in the June meeting. Ongoing issues still under consideration, none at this time. The committee will continue to review curricular initiatives throughout the development and completion of the budget. Next meeting time, place will be June 7th, scheduled 7 o'clock PM at the Slay Ball Primary. Possible topics to be discussed, textbook and supplemental resource list for approval, standard changes and implementation plans for the 2022-2023 school year. And I would also like to refer back to Ms. Moss. She did a great job with the school performance report. This is a lot of what we do in curriculum, so I just wanted to say you did a great job with that, Ms. Moss. And if there's anything that you'd like to add to the report? If not, this concludes my report.
No, I do not. Thank you, Mr. Price.
All right. Motion for 9.2 to 9.4.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Was that second, Mr. Delabarka? Yes. Thank you.
Any discussion? No? Okay. Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes. Okay. Personnel. Dr. Charlton, you have anything?
I do not have anything for public session, Madam President.
Okay. All right. So, I need a motion for 10.2 to 10.8.
Show me.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Okay. One of my favorite times of the night, get to introduce new employees. And for the first time in public, as Egg Harbor Township employees, we have our supervisors of special education. And congratulations and welcome to our E H T family. And we'll begin with Mr. Francisco Santiago. And also with us new tonight and starting his administrative career here at Egg Harbor Township, Nicholas Dory. Congratulations. Okay. Welcome aboard.
And joining us tonight for the first time is our new Assistant Business Administrator, Jennifer Germa, Germania? Germania?
Germana.
Germana. Okay. Welcome. I'm glad you could join us. Okay. Policy. Mr. San, oh, where is he? Mr. Ireland. Mr. Ireland's on the laptop because he's out of state.
Can everybody hear me perfect?
Well, good enough. Not perfect.
Okay. That does. So, good evening, everybody. I'm going to give the policy report. So, our meeting was held on Tuesday, May 10th, and it included myself, Mr. Seppi, and Ms. Hyman. And administrators attended were Mr. Santilli. And others that were there were Ms. Emile Galco. The subjects that were discussed were Policy 5541 Anti-Hazing, Policy 8465 Bias Crimes and Bias Related Acts, Bylaw 0146 For Member Authority, Policy 5530 Substance Abuse, Policy 5530-1 Substance Abuse Eagle Academy, Policy 5530-2 Substance Abuse High School and Middle School, Policy 5530-3 Substance Abuse Suspicionless Drug Sweeps, Policy and Regulation 2431.4 Prevention and Treatment of Sports-Related Concussions and Head Injuries, Policy 8420 Emergency and Crisis Situations, Policy 9320 Cooperation with Law Enforcement Agencies, Policy 5514 Student Use of Vehicles. The conclusions that were reached during this policy meeting were Policy 5541 Anti-Hazing and Policy 8465 Bias Crimes and Bias Related Acts were reviewed as a second reading. Bylaw 0146 For Authority was reviewed by the committee with minor updates being proposed for approval to update outdated language and information. Policy 5530 Substance Abuse has been revised to update the New Jersey Department of Education's changes of the reporting system from Electronic Violence and Vandalism Reporting System to the current reporting system, Student Safety Data System, as well as other mandated updates related to 64-18A. Policy 5530-1 Substance Abuse Eagle Academy, Policy 5530-2 Substance Abuse High School and Middle School, Policy 5530-3 Substance Abuse Suspicionless Drug Sweeps were recommended for abolishment due to the mandated updates to Policy 5530 and combining information into one policy. Policy and Regulation 2431.4 Prevention and Treatment of Sports-Related Concussions and Head Injuries are replacement and will require two readings. Both have been rewritten to address the revisions in NJSA 18A40-41.2 and NJSA 18A40-41.4, which expanded the scope of the law, including intramural sports and along with interscholastic sports and cheerleading programs. Strauss S. may address these revisions by modifying the definition of athletic competition used in Policy Guide 2431 to include interscholastic sports and intramural sports and cheerleading activities. Policy 8420 Emergency and Crisis Situations is a mandated policy that has been updated to include the new language in NJSA 18A41-7A Regarding School Security Trails. Policy 9320 Cooperation with Law Enforcement Agencies is a mandated policy that its replacement will require two readings. This policy has been rewritten to align with NJAC 6A16-6.2, which governs the development and implementation of the policies and the procedures for law enforcement operations in a school. All school districts must annually review, revise when appropriate, and adopt the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials, MOE, pursuant to NJAC 6A16-6.3, 6.2B 13 through 14. Policy 5514 Student Use of Vehicles was on the Policies Committee's agenda for both discussion and review. There are minor updates being recommended on the policy. That is all I have for the report. Mr. Santilli, do you have anything further to discuss on this?
No, not at that time, at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
I have a question, please.
Okay.
Okay. In regards to Policy Number 5514 Student Use of Vehicles, I did read the policy over. But I did have some concerns about, is there a policy in regards to students walking to school? Do we have a specific policy in regards to students walking to school? Does anybody have information on this?
So, I can interject and say that we do not have a policy for students walking to school because we are 100% courtesy busing school district, which means even if students live closer than two miles to school, we provide courtesy busing to them in our district.
Okay. So, do we have a policy? Or what would it come under if a student was walking to school? Would that come under discipline then, a policy? Or what would that be specifically if a student walks into the building? Say they park somewhere remotely and then walk, or they walk from home? What, how do we address the consequences to that? Is there a policy in place?
There's not a policy in place because right now, parents are allowed to drive students to school, drop them off. And sometimes, based upon where they get dropped off, you can't tell if a student is walking from another location, walking from their parents' car. So, what we did at policy, and Mr. Ireland, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we did ask Mr. Santilli to continue to research it, as I'm continuing to research it, to provide further information to the committee to review. And if any of the other committee members want to jump in as well, but that is my understanding of what we're doing. We're looking at options because right now, we have students that, for example, live right next door to Fernwood School, where they can literally walk 50 feet to the school.
Across the street, but we have no crossing guards, sidewalks.
Correct. Well, crossing guards and sidewalks come under the township responsibilities, so that's something that, you know, we do have some sidewalks in the town, but not all sidewalks. So, that's why we became...
So, we don't have a specific policy that prohibits walking to school? There's no specific policy?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question. And I hope that we can continue this a little bit further. I'd like to discuss it further, maybe in policy. If that's okay with you, Mr. Ireland? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion for Policy Items 11.2 to 11.13. Mr. Ireland? Mrs. Sullivan? Okay. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mic check. There we go. Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes. Okay. We have a high school mock car crash that we need to vote on because it's on school property. So, I need a motion and a second.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Sorry about that. Mr. Ireland is now going to be absent for voting. Mrs. Bonjourno for high school mock car crash?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
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 Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mic check. Yes. Okay. Mr. Ireland is now absent for the vote. Mr. Price?
Okay. Before I vote, I just want to clarify what the mark, or what the mock car crash will entail. Is that where they will tow a vehicle to the high school and park a crashed vehicle out there like we've done before? Could you just clarify that? I believe I know what you mean, but I just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Price, it's a demonstration by the Community MS system. It incorporates collaborative efforts from the ambulance, the police. Sometimes you have the state police come with a helicopter, and it's a mock crash. Particularly, you'll see it before prom time so that students have awareness of the importance of not drinking and driving and what could happen. And if, God forbid, it does happen, what's entailed from start to finish. I encourage board members, if you have an opportunity, believe Ms. Connors is Thursday, out in the high school in the parking lot. We've done it many, many years in a row. I'm not sure because COVID put a squish to it the last couple of years, but it's something to say. It's great awareness for students and for any community member who would like to attend.
Okay. Thank you very much. And my vote is yes.
Thank you. Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, H I B and D H Determination Reports. This also includes D H 7, 8, 9, and 10. I need a motion and a second.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? No?
Mrs. Sullivan and Mr. Delabarka, is that what I heard? Thank you very much.
Okay. Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
No. Okay. Communications. The Egg Harbor Township Board of Education is pleased to announce that the board has approved a memorandum of agreement between the board and the Egg Harbor Township Association at the May 3rd, 2022 board meeting. This agreement continues to work towards securing benefits for our students and school community. The agreement provides continuing our professional learning communities to help secure collaboration and coordination for our, of our staff, while also providing district-wide equity amongst teachers' hours and workload. We are working very hard to retain our support staff, and this agreement includes significant adjustments to salary and longevity. The agreement also provides an annual increase for teachers of 3.5 per year and 4% per year for paraprofessionals and custodians. As a board, we appreciate the hard work of our staff during the past few years. We believe that this is a fair and equitable settlement agreement for the board and the association. We want to thank the association for their hard work, their collaboration as we work through negotiations. We are happy and ready to start 2023 school year with a signed contract. I don't think so. That's it. Okay. Okay. We're going to go to public comment again. If anybody has anything to say, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. Okay. Then we'll move towards an adjournment.
We will put it on to the website for a few minutes just to make sure. It's going to take 30 seconds to get on, and then we'll wait a minute.
I forgot. I forgot.
That's okay. It's on the website now, so I'll start the timer. It's a little delayed because of the livestream. There are no callers when you're ready. We're done. Thank you.
You good? Okay. All right. We have come up with a resolution to send to the state, and I'd like to read that into the record. This is to request to suspend the implementation of the new health and physical education standards for guidance classroom instruction, whereas the board is very concerned about the age inappropriate, inappropriateness of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Comprehensive Health and Physical Education for Guided Classroom Instruction adopted by the State Board of Education in June of 2020, and the sensitive information it requires school districts to share with its very young students. Whereas, the board believes it was wrong for the State Board of Education to adopt the age inappropriate health and standards for guided classrooms instruction in June of 2020 during the declared state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, when educators and parents and other stakeholders were focusing on the road back to an in-person instruction and the health, safety, and welfare of their students, staff, and community members, and not inappropriate changes to the health standards for guided classroom instruction. And whereas, the board strongly believes that all parents, educators, and boards should have appropriate time to comment to the State Board of Education regarding the health standards for guided classroom instruction now that the peak of the COVID-19 pandemic is over. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the board formally requests that Governor Murphy suspend the... that Governor Murphy suspend the implementation of the new health standards for guided classroom instruction, and be it further resolved that the board formally request that Governor Murphy remands the health standards for guided classroom instruction back to the State Board of Education for a thorough and complete opportunity for the public discussion before any new health and physical education standards for guided classroom instruction are implemented. Okay. So, no comment from the public, so we are going to move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? I'm sorry?
I just want to say that I'm really proud of all of the board members that supported this resolution. We hope we're getting our message out that the public and that the constituents should really have a say in what is taught to our children and how we treat our children. And I'm just really proud that we are sending this resolution to the state.
A motion to adjourn, please?
Motion.
Second.
There we go.